Can you believe that? And just yesterday it was like-
Not down here.
When the sun was fully occluded down there, it got colder.
Temperature dropped, yeah.
Yeah.
It's kinda eerie when the sun's not shining.
All right, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, April the 8th. Fingevorocca made a clerk to establish the court.
Susan Gruney is absent with notice. David Avinzino-
Present.
Harry Meyer-
Here.
Terry McClung-
I'm here.
Autumn Slane-
Here.
Steve Holfield-
Present.
All right, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All right. The only thing on here that I know of is our minutes will be deferred to next meeting because of our computer has been down for the last couple of days. We weren't able to get to them. Other than that, anybody have anything? If not, get a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I get a motion to approve the minutes for March 25th. Whoops, I already deferred that one. All right, we've got some vacancies that in your package, you'll have Michael Welch submitted his application for the planning commission. And we also have an application from Aaron Bory for the parks. And anybody out there who's interested, we also have a vacancy on the historic district commission and also the cemetery commission. So if you're interested in applying and working and doing some public service, come on in and apply for one of these positions. At this time, we'll have public comments? Anybody? I don't see anybody for that.
No, okay. Sorry, I forgot Ken's not here.
No, I thought Michael was gonna say something, but... All right. First item of business under unfinished business is a sewer update for our public works director, Simon. Give us a water and sewer update.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, thank you.
I'm able to discuss the sewer updates.
Second.
All right.
That would've been fine if we didn't do that, I'd just sit right down. So as far as sewer updates go, I think we're still progressing with the, with getting approval from ADEQ and the funding that's required to do this remodel of the plant. So we're still working on that. As far as updates of the plant, Saturday, we had a little bit of an issue Saturday morning and Terry came in and we have a, we have an employee that works through the weekends too, but they were out there. We had a valve that failed on the, one of the SBR tanks. It didn't cause overflow, but we did have to take that SBR offline until we get that valve fixed. It's one of the electrical valves inside the building. But I don't know what the cost is gonna be of that yet, I really don't know. We're waiting on some quotes. We've been working with McClellan on trying to get some contractors out there to give us price and availability of their parts. So for, for water news, I'll talk about that for a second. I did our calculation this month and it appears that we're only at a 40% loss right now, so we're making huge strides as far as that goes, so, yes, sir.
So at the water tower, we're on hold until it's not completed yet, or is it?
It is, it's fixed, it's done.
Okay, so we're just waiting on, on the patch?
Yeah, the only thing we're waiting on, we did a hot mix-
Right.
-patch of the holes over there, but Emery Sap is booked up through the summer. It'll be the fall before they come out here, they're gonna mill out that area and do a probably a 1.8 inch overlay with hot mix. We're not gonna take out the yellow stripe there, but over by O'Reilly's, we're gonna have to take out the yellow stripe and repaint that stripe in, but we can do that ourselves. But yeah, that'll be this fall.
So those, what we're looking at now is the one by the Trolley Depot, which has not been attacked yet, right? And then the one on top of Planer Hill?
Yeah, the one at the top of Planer Hill is done, we just have to backfill it.
Oh, it is done?
It's done, yeah.
Oh, good.
It was finished up Friday as well, so-
Okay.
They still have some patching to do. There's a, if you go in the bank parking lot, there's, there's like five or six valves that are there, just random valve risers, so we're gonna eliminate all that, cut that out and, and just close that together, that, in that area, and that will eliminate that T also that goes across the street that's leaking. But yeah, all that's pretty much finished up.
Good.
Cool.
Any other new ones?
The only leak that I could figure that I think we might have right now is right where Spring Street breaks off Main Street. I think we might have a leak down, up there, somewhere close to that intersection, so we're gonna be listening for that here pretty soon and trying to find that leak. We've been really shorthanded. I've got an employee out, our, our crew foreman actually, he's out, his wife's very sick and she might not make it, so he was out last week and is gonna be out this week at least, so it just puts a strain on our crew, you know, so, yep.
What's the lowest water loss that we could ever dream-
Forty percent.
Huh?
Forty percent is the lowest we've ever had.
Really?
And, you know, when I look at, and I don't have like historical data, that goes years and years back, I just went back to 2020. So forty percent is like monumental for us, 'cause we've been sitting consistently at 55, 60%, so we're doing something right.
What's our dream go?
Zero, but I don't, I don't know if that'll ever happen, but you know, we're working on the-
Does anybody ever do zero?
I don't know if I've ever been in a city that had zero loss.
I think the, isn't the average 25?
Yeah, it's roughly 15 to 25.
I think we were told when Dwayne was here that if we got, you know, 25 to 30% loss, that's good. Most cities have at least 25, 30%.
And with, with that Act 605, we're gonna be able to eliminate some of that older infrastructure in the ground, you know, and come up with replacement and, and hopefully bring those numbers even further down, so I'm excited about the future, and I hope you guys are too, so we're gonna do some great things.
That leak there by Spring Street and, and Main?
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't, could that just be Basin Spring?
No, it's not Basin Spring. So the last time that water popped up, according to Rob, our public works manager, it was actually a house up further, up the hill behind Basin that had a service line that was leaking. Their, their house line was, on their side of the meter was leaking and they fixed that and that stopped that leak, but I'm not 100% sure that that's the case this time, so we're gonna, we're gonna be out there this week listening with that new equipment that we have and try to pinpoint exactly where that water's coming from.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
However, you're gonna be right up next to, under new business, get a motion to discuss the bids on repairs for Lindsay Street.
Move to discuss repairs on Lindsay Street.
Second.
So, so I apologize for not having this near packet, but I have received bids from C4 Construction, Rock and W Construction, Stacy Stonework, and Barrows Excavation. C4 and Rock and W wanna partner up with Stacy and let Stacy do the concrete work and they perform all the excavation. So I just got some of their bids this afternoon, yes, sir?
Can you first identify what Lindsay Street is and what it is?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So if you go up Flint Street, up to the top of the hill and you go left, like you're gonna go to East Mountain?
On Steel.
It's one of the roads that breaks off to the left up there, yeah. So it feeds, I think Lindsay Nut, Hazel Nut, or I don't, it has, there's quite a few roads back there.
Lindsay Nut Copper, Hazel, and then it circles on around.
Right. So the, the landslide occurred a couple of weeks ago when we had all that rain and the whole rock collapsed and the street's failing. We're getting, we're really close to losing the street right now and I'm kinda worried about that trailer house, so I kinda expedited this process, tried to get this through, so I guess somebody started excavating on that anyways, so-
And there's probably a bit more than just a stone wall there, too.
Is this there by Ernies? Is this that one?
The what?
By Bill and Ernies?
Yes, right above Bill's, right there at that trailer.
Yeah.
We also had an issue with that turn out of Lindsay Street going up. Some part of this work is doing a lot of regrading and water rerouting and drainage, so it's not just the stone wall.
Yeah, it needs a lot.
So, so part of this proposal is we're gonna put a gutter line up on Steel Street, coming down Steel Street to Lindsay, and move in that radius where you, if you were coming from East Mountain and you turn right on, on Lindsay, moving that up further towards East Mountain. And then that'll widen that road intersection, but we're also gonna level that out more than what it is right now. It's, it's really kinda janky how it is in there, so it'll, it'll be like a normal road.
It's been sinking.
Yeah. And then it'll have curb running down the, the island side, if you will, of the, the part down to the drainage culvert, and then the other side, the wall, will pretty much be a curb and gutter of itself on the, on the trailer house side to divert the water down the hill. What we're gonna try to do is pitch that road so all the drainage kinda drains to the Steel Street side of Lindsay, so it all goes in the culvert and doesn't wash out Miss Terry Williams driveway there, so I think, I think it's gonna be a good project, but it's a very expensive project. So as far as my numbers, C4 came in the highest partnering up with Stacy. They came in at $224,176.75. Rock and W came in second at $197,126, $197,126. And then Barrows Excavation came in the lowest with a bid of $176,364. And that is if they do a real rock veneer on that, limestone veneer. They, they did provide an option to do a synthetic rock veneer, which would look essentially the same as the real rock veneer, but it'd be fake, but it came in at $152,364.
Who, who was that bid?
That was Barrows, so-
Well, what was the $176,000?
Barrows. Barrows is real rock, the 176 is real rock, the 152 is fake rock.
Oh, okay, I got you.
So the only, my only concern about using the fake, fake rock is that I haven't really talked to Kyle about being able to use that. As far as the rock veneer yet, he said he would sign off, I had no issues at all, but the-
Did you get a quote on the rock from Trigg?
From who?
Torgeson? They had to put this all out as a lump sum bid, they couldn't separate the bid. I see. So, and it depend upon the companies to solicit the stone bids. The subcontractors.
Yeah. So the Barrows Excavation, I think, they're gonna be 100% in-house using their crews and for excavation and the concrete work. And then the C4 and Rock and W quotes had Stacy Stonework performing all the concrete and rock veneer work. So my recommendation is to accept a bid from Barrows Excavation for $176,364 and no change. This will be paid, $100,000 of it will be paid out of our, our street fund, the rock, the, the wall fund that we have to rebuild walls, and then the remainder will come out of just the street maintenance, so-
It's not marked out up there where a guy can just go by and kinda see what it is?
You can't miss it, yeah.
Well, I mean, I know you can't miss what it is, but, but I mean, as, as far as what wanna be done?
Now, I have it drawn up on a map of where everything goes at the office, so you've got an idea.
I can stop that, yeah, okay.
You can drive by and see what needs to be done, real easy.
Yeah, I hadn't been up there yet.
Yeah.
So this will also close in that ditch essentially that runs between Lindsay and Steel Street. We're gonna leave the culvert that crosses Lindsay, but it'll close in that ditch and then force the water around on the street and down into that culvert.
I, you know, Terry's been griping about the water for a while and, and I thought perhaps running a, a tube across the upper side of Steel Street across to Lindsay Street so it can go into the same tube that's on Lindsay Street.
Yeah, that'd be really hard, there's a lot of elevation difference between the two roads, so I don't know how viable that option is, but if I could get that water to collect in a curb and gutter and follow that road, that intersection around and get into the culvert, I think that's gonna be our cheapest and best alternative.
So, any, any other thoughts? What we need is a motion to accept the bids and proceed on. There is another option we're hoping might come in lower, but right now that's the, and the option is maybe going in with a large stone that we'd used over on Ellis Grade. They're, you know, like three feet by two feet by two feet, and that takes place of the concrete and the rock. But again, I don't know if that's gonna come in or not, so depends on Barrows, but right now Barrows is the lowest, lowest bid.
Yeah.
Only other question I have, what's the timeline?
They're gonna start pretty much immediately, I've gotta get something done with that road before it collapses further into that house, so, yeah, it'll be a project that happens pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Barrows bid of $176,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. McClung made motion and Ms. Holfield second?
Do you have that total correct? $176,364.
I'm sorry, $176,300-
Sixty-four.
Three sixty-four.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, so our next item is trash bags. Ms. Slane?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
So I have been fielding a lot of phone calls and you know it, and the majority of the people are, the one bag is just simply not enough. A family of four produces more trash than a 35 gallon bin. But I think the larger problem is perhaps our residents don't understand the trash bag facility and really what they can offer, because 90% of the people didn't know they could get a cart. So it would, you know, negate the issue at hand because they could get a cart, but they don't even know that that's even an option. So we desperately need either like a sales brochure from Carroll County or at least just a flyer or something going out, or even more information on the back of the water, 'cause it's a little unclear. That's really all I got.
Are you, what are you proposing?
I'm proposing a two-bag system and we definitely need more education. I mean, and, and really, it's, in my opinion, it's a sales brochure, because I feel like a lot of these people, they're not downtown, they could get a cart, but they don't even know they could get a cart. They don't know, even know it's an option, so-
And they do, I think they'd still have to pay for the cart.
Still have to pay for the cart, but at least it wouldn't be, I'm using three bags a week and I've gotta constantly get down and buy that tag, you know, where if they just got the cart, you could put your three bags in the cart.
Well, they don't have to buy, they don't have to buy a tag if they've only got two bags. They don't have to do it if there's-
Yeah.
More than two bags.
If it's more than two bags, then you have to buy a tag. But if you are consistently using three bags and you're always having to get a tag, then you need a cart. But if you're physically not able to get a cart for, you know, geography reasons or weight issues, then that's a whole nother thing, but you should be able to get a cart. Most people should be able to get a cart, but they don't even know that it's an option. Everyone I talked to didn't know that they offered carts, 'cause they see the ordinance and they say, oh, one bag, after that I have to get tags. There's just no information directing them in another direction. And, and I truly kinda feel like it's a little more of Carroll County Solid Waste, just advertising what they're selling, because we're, we're making an ordinance that says two bags, but it doesn't say anything about any of the other programs, and that's where people just stop right there.
Mr. McClung?
Two things. One is, how much is, is the cart? I know what you're talking about, I don't know what the price on it is a month.
We have representative from Carroll County Solid Waste.
We do, okay, but I also have another statement and they can qualify this as well, is that I have, I, I use a 35 gallon trash can. And, and it'll handle two 35 gallon trash bags if you push the air out of them. You can get two bags in it with the lid on it.
Can we pick it up?
Huh?
Can we just pick up your old can?
Yeah, you, yeah, you take the can, that's, that's the way it works. As long as it's in a can, yeah.
I got a question for you guys. Last time we were, you brought carts to- Wait a minute, I think their first question was, how much is a cart?
Yeah, what, yeah, how much is the cart?
It's different, it's different in every town, I think it's around $30.
Yeah.
No. I believe it's around 24, 24 or 26.
It really is different in every town.
But it is.
Is that a one-time fee?
That's a monthly fee.
That's a monthly fee.
It replaces what you're paying for the, the two-bag or one-bag services.
And I'm talking a 65 gallon cart, which is three bags, four bags, is what you're going to be able to smash down and get in that cart. And, and you are correct, our, they've been calling our office and they didn't know about the other options.
Right.
And our office told them about the other options.
We've set, we've set quite a few-
Okay, that's good.
We have, yes, we have set quite a few cards. I don't, I really don't understand that. On the bag deal, I do agree maybe one bag is not enough, but the, the bag tags are just $2, correct?
Yes.
And, and they're gonna pay $24, $26 for a cart a month, so I don't-
It'd be cheaper for them to buy a bag.
It would be, it would be cheaper for them, yes, to buy the, the bag tag, go with the one or two bag, whatever you decide, and to, and I believe that would, would push more to recycle.
Mr. Holfield?
So Berryville and Green Forest, how many bags do they do?
Green Forest is two bag, Berryville is one bag. Berryville's been one bag. Berryville started with, Berryville was open in 2000, they started with BFI. And in 2001, we took over for BFI. And when they started with BFI, that was Berryville's first contract with a single hauler. It's been one bag every, every since then.
And Berryville started out real rough. Berryville was, I mean, y'all are mellow compared to what we got over there, but it worked out eventually, but-
So I think if Berryville can do it, I don't know why we can't do it. And to me, the one bag is, then you need to be examining what you're putting in there. And I know people who don't recycle, stuff everything in two or three bags.
And Berryville was pushed as a super recycling program, that's how Berryville was pushed with the one bag, and I honestly didn't think it was gonna work out, and it took a, you know, a little while, a few months. It worked out and it's been doing that for 20, 20-plus years.
We do have a lot of carts in Berryville.
Yeah.
The people, that's just, that's just not interested in recycling, they, they get the carts, but I really believe the citizens of Eureka Springs, I'm gonna say Eureka Springs and this side of the river is where we get 85% of our recycling from. And, and I, I really believe that the, I'd hate to just set carts out and, and we would make more money on carts and lose the recycling end of it.
It'd sound like it'll all be, still be cheaper too with the bags. Mr. Myers? Well, you brought two, you, two carts here when you showed us. And the smaller cart, how many gallons was it?
Now, the, did we bring the blue 35 gallon cart?
We did, we did. We don't, that's not a service we offer, but it's a service we could offer.
Yes.
But the carts were-
65, 65 gallon and 95 gallon is the service that we offer.
I see, okay. You just teased us with that little one.
I actually brought the little one in, in case you wanted to go with the one bag.
It shows you the size, I mean, it's-
Yes, it shows you a size of what, what the one, about what the one bag would, would actually hold compared to a 65 gallon or a 95 gallon.
Mr. Slane?
My concern is really for families. I have a child in diapers and, I mean, I'm not getting out of, just the diapers alone is, is a bathroom trash bag every day, every day. It's unfortunate, but that's what it is. And, and that's where I guess my concern is with the one bag, because throw kitchen trash in there and, and those diapers and, I mean, I'm cashed out way before I can, you know? And, and that's where I think that, you know, in between the, the 65 gallon bin and the one trash bag, we're just too much apart, you know? I think it should be two bags and then if you want a little more, get, get the bin. But I think there is a little bit of confusion within the city that we are as a city offering the trash service.
Yes, there is.
And, you know, so I think that, like, that just kind of needs to be clarified of like, hey, it's th- these people, this is what they offer.
Well, even on the rule, you know, when they'll call and say, why are y'all doing this? I say, well, we didn't do it, the city does, we have the contract with you for trash.
Yeah. Well, as, as well as our, our, our city personnel are getting the same-
We've all talked a lot.
Yes. So I, I just wish that we would give each other a little more grace, especially something that's been one-way for a very long time.
Mr. McClung?
The, the, the yellow bags were, was not a perfect situation, and this is not gonna be either. I mean, not everybody is, you know, gonna fall into the minimum requirements. I encourage the citizens to buy a 35 gallon can and use that can, whether you put it in the bags, they'll take it even if it's not in the bags.
You'd definitely get a lot worried if you have a can and then you get a 35 gallon bag and-
And you don't have to buy an expensive one, there's-
That's right, and-
Cheaper Walmart.
And you can buy your own, you don't have to-
That's right, you don't rent it, you, it's a one-time purchase, you use the can, whether you put it in bags and compress the air out of them and shove them in there or put the, your refuse in there loose, that's entirely up to you, you can do that and stomp it down if you want to, I suppose.
Stop those diapers.
The, the thing about it is, you know, there's not a perfect situation, and so, you know, the people just gonna have to realize that's just the way it is, you know? We choose one or we choose the other, but I'm not, if, if we were gonna complain about this, you know, about things like this already, I'd have never changed it, you know?
Mr. Mayor? Well, you know, before, it was about yellow bags, but then it was, we were limited- but then it was, we were limiting the number of bags, where when we had yellow bags, they would pick up as many yellow bags as you put out on the street. And I've seen abuse of the yellow bags. I mean, I saw somebody put a bunch of lumber out there, and they wrapped a yellow bag around it, and it got carried off in the trash. So, but mostly, mostly, we haven't been putting out that much trash, I don't think. I don't think we need to limit it. People pretty well limit themselves.
Mr. Hurleyfield?
I was, I bought some tags today, and I was surprised City Hall is not selling them. I thought it was gonna be at City Hall and out at Public Works.
Did you have to get them at Public Works?
Yep.
So the city, the courthouse, you're not selling them downtown?
Yeah. I don't think we have them at this point. Simon?
That's correct. They kind of restructured City Hall a little bit, and I think they put that on us because we're the ones billing for the trash as well, so... But the reason I came up here was actually, one of the biggest things we found through this transition to the single-bag process, pickup, I guess essentially, is that there's a lot of people that are sharing the trash service, whether it be a meter servicing, you know, multiple addresses or whatever the case might be. Yeah, so that's the number-one issue we've ran into, and we have some business owners that are having to install more meters because they're using one meter to supply a bunch of apartments and businesses. So that's the biggest issue that I've found. And we're working on that right now, so... But other than that, it's been all right for the most part.
Well, that, in my opinion, would be, that, those need special attention. Those need to be built separately, like commercial businesses, correct? Or something? And that, if they have apartments or something like that, if they're meter-sharing and trying to use just one trash service, then that needs to be adjusted a different way, not...
So our municipal code states that you're not allowed to share water. So sharing water amongst different businesses and addresses is against the municipal code. So that's something I'm working on right now.
I don't, no, I don't really follow what you're saying there.
So if you, if you have two businesses next door to each other, and you have one water meter serving in both those businesses, that is against municipal code, the sharing of water. So when you're sharing water, you're also sharing your trash service.
And I understand that, but I don't see, when did this occur in municipal code?
I think, off the top of my head, I think 2002.
2002?
Yeah.
So have things been added in since then new that, or are the existing grandfather-type properties?
No, I don't think so. But it doesn't have a grandfather clause in the ordinance.
So you're just gonna go in and make people put in extra meters?
Right. So the people I've been working...
I'm not so sure that that's the right way to do things, or if we can do things that way.
So I've given everybody, you know, I've talked to them and gave them all a year to get the compliance, and they've all been okay with the decision.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
What about apartments?
Yeah, so you do apartments. There's exemptions as far as like that goes. We do have an apartment complex down on Pivotal Rock where they have a meter for the entire apartment complex, and you could do that. But what's happening with the ones that I'm speaking about, they'll have a renter of an apartment, and they're paying the water bill and trash bill for everybody in all the addresses. It's not the landlord paying for it, it's the renter paying for it. And it's just not fair to make somebody that's leasing your property pay for everybody else's water too. And that's why we have that ordinance in place.
Say that again?
It's not fair to have a renter of your property pay for the water utility for all the businesses that are attached to your...
You're talking about businesses or apartments, residential apartments?
So we have apartments in downtown above the businesses, and we have one that has multiple addresses. And one apartment renter is paying for the water and trash for the entire...
Building.
But that's an agreement, that's an agreement between the landlord and the tenant, is it not? If the tenant agrees to do that, so what's the problem?
I may have to agree to disagree on that because I don't think it's fair for a tenant to have to pay for a business that provides no financial services to have that water service or that trash service. If you're renting a building for, say you're renting an apartment for me, and I have five businesses downstairs that are water users, and you're paying the bill, is it fair to you as a renter?
Well, if I'm willing to pay it, then it is. But I don't, I can't imagine the tenant upstairs doing something like that.
I have a situation downtown where the apartment next door had a big leak. It was vacant. And the other renter in the other apartment is liable because that water service is in her name.
Well, I mean, if that's the arrangement that they have with the landlord, that's between them.
Yeah, that's why we have ordinances to prevent that, though.
I don't think, I don't follow that at all. I don't think you have the right to do that.
Mr. Myers?
Well, I think, I, it's not fair to the city. It's not fair to all the rest of the water customer.
I understand.
Please, let me finish. It's not fair to the other water customers because the other water customers are having to carry the load whenever the rates go up. And yet, there could be an apartment building, somebody making a profit off of these apartments, and the guy won't even provide a meter for each apartment? That doesn't sound the least bit of fair. I don't care how long ago it was done.
Some of our historic buildings, it's impossible to put in multiple units. They're 100-year-old buildings with 100-year-old water lines that service that one building, and it just happens to have multiple tenants.
It's time to upgrade.
Some of it's impossible to do.
No, there's no such thing as impossible.
That would, one meter, one bag, though, one service, that could cause a, that could cause, if you've got four apartments with one meter, there's no way four apartments are gonna work off of one bag of trash.
No, of course not.
A week.
This is our problem.
And that's, you know, our apartments that are, that have a meter servicing an entire complex or whatever of apartments, one address, they, we've noticed that some of them have the base commercial rate, which is essentially 35 gallons worth of trash too, so they have to upgrade their... But with the yellow bag system, they could just buy as many yellow bags as they want and just put them out, and they would pick them up, you know? But that's, this is the number-one issue that I'm finding.
Mr. Hurleyfield?
I'm disappointed, you know, the City Hall, they used to sell the bags, but now they're not gonna sell the tags. So there's only one place to buy the tags, is to go up to the offices on Highway 62?
Yeah, the City Hall also doesn't take water bill payments. You could put it in the drop box out there, but all water bill payments go through Public Works.
I'm disappointed that...
Well, that's a separate issue.
Yeah.
I think that while we are figuring this out, and the whole community is at a point of, we're having issues with multiple trash users for one water line, we're having things that are coming up that are bringing it to light, nothing that we could have done about this. But I do think that in this time, to do the two bags, because right now, we kind of need it. And in six months, in June, while we, after we get all this figured out, then let's go back to one bag. But I personally think that you cannot, you just can't do this to people. There are so many bags left on the corner and on the streets because they don't have enough. There's just not enough. And I understand you can get tags, but, you know, these people are literally used to being put out five bags, and now they're getting one. So we've gotta do something to help.
Mr. McClure?
Maybe we need to go back to the yellow bags. Maybe that was the way, maybe that was the right thing in the beginning because we didn't think this through like we thought we did. I mean, that's, there's reality in that. Everybody was covered with their trash then. You paid for your yellow bags, and it got picked up, and, you know, that was the way it worked.
Mr. Myers?
Well, if we got multiple apartments in a building, and all the people have to do is buy bags for their trash, but they don't have to pay the water bill or the sewer bill, that is a problem. And if the one person with the meter pays the trash charge, that is a problem because everyone else gets by for free. And with 605 coming up and all the stuff we're gonna have to do, everybody needs to have a meter. They need to pay for their water and their sewer.
I make a motion to adjust ordinance 2348 to have two 35-gallon bags.
Max.
Maximum.
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 All right, did I hear a second?
Can you repeat it, Autumn?
She wanted to have, go ahead.
Make a motion to adjust or change ordinance 2348, the trash ordinance, to have two trash bags, 35 gallons each. Basically keeping everything the same, just upping it to two, and until we can get this figured out of 45 people on one trash bag, like, that's crazy.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Mr. McClure?
Well, no one's seconded yet.
No, we did have a second.
Oh, we did have a second?
Mr. Avanzino.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
We're in discussion. Did you have a motion or, I mean, a discussion?
Well, I'm trying to think it through. Oh, can we, can we do this? Can we do this just as a vote here without changing the ordinance on a temporary basis? Can we do that, or do we have to write something new? That's my question.
Well, it has to be written, but it's easy to written to amend the ordinance.
Yeah, I think this is just an amendment to the ordinance.
And so, and so this would...
We, no, this ordinance has been posted. It's gone into effect. It's gonna be codified, so we need to pass the second ordinance.
We'll have to amend that.
Well, we'll have to amend this ordinance.
But can it be amended, and then what she's referring to is put a sunset clause in it?
You can add that to the motion.
Yeah.
Well, that's what she's referring to, and I would like to amend the motion made by Ms. Lane to give it a 90-day sunset clause. Is that, that puts us under the...
You think that's long enough? That's only three months.
Okay, 120 days.
Six months.
And what happens at the end?
Give them a four-month trial.
And what happens at the end? It goes back?
Wait, we just got an amendment. We hadn't gotten a second on it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, your question.
Okay, so what would happen to it?
At the end of four months, it would revert back to what it...
Revert back, okay.
Or to something else.
I'm sorry.
It would just come back to the table?
Come back to the table.
There's already a motion in play. We couldn't have a second motion. We had a motion.
It's an amendment.
We've amended that motion.
But Autumn would need to amend it because she made the motion.
Terry made the motion. He doesn't, she doesn't have to amend it. Terry can amend the question.
I can amend it.
But she made, Autumn made a motion, Avanzino seconded. We hadn't voted on that yet.
No, but now we've got an amendment, so we vote on the amendment first. And then we vote on the motion.
That's not procedure, but...
I think that's correct, isn't it, Mr.?
Yeah, I think you should do the amendment to the amendment before you do the amendment.
So anyway, we're in discussion of the amendment. On whether or not, at the end of four months, it will come back to the table, or it automatically reverts back to the one bag.
I think the clerk is right. We need to vote on the thing first, and then we can amend it.
Or Autumn can change her motion.
Yeah. I make a motion to change ordinance 2348 to a quantity of two 35-gallon bags with a sunset clause of 120 days to bring back to the table.
Second.
That sounds good. First of all, has everybody agreed to remove the first?
Sure.
The amendment and the first?
Yes.
Motion. We gotta withdraw the first motion. We gotta withdraw the amendment, which is withdrawn, and then withdraw the...
I'll withdraw my first motion.
So now we're back to your motion to make a clause of allowing two 35-gallon bags with a sunset clause of four months. Does everybody understand the motion? All right, and we had a second to that?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Avanzino seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none on favors, in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. In reference to your comments about people being aware of it, it's on our website in big, long, and people need to look at the website to find out what...
Are the carts on there? I think that specifically...
The carts are on there also.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the Q and A. I put a whole Q and A. It was linked on the back of the water bills. It said to look at the city website. When you go to their website and you click on residential trash, it says you can have the cart service instead of the trash bag. So I'm not really sure what else to do.
Our phone number used to be on the back of y'all's water bill, too. I don't know if this still is.
Yeah, it is.
Well, and I feel like the water bill, on the back of the water bill, is a little bit confusing. It's like two separate paragraphs that just run into each other.
It's a small water bill.
I know it. I know it. But it needs to be a little space. We reworded just a little bit to make it just a little more clear, to clue people to check with.
All right. The motion passed. We're, that's second, up to the second item of businesses. Get a motion to discuss banning of plastic confetti during parades.
Did we pass it? I don't think we voted on it.
Yes, we did.
We did? Okay, cool.
We're gonna do the two bags for four months.
We're gonna be talking to you in a little bit about the...
We start Wednesday?
About the time.
We start Wednesday?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. A motion to discuss the banning of plastic confetti and other trash that's thrown out during parades.
Second.
I think, you know, paper confetti at least dissolves. But there was a bunch of plastic confetti tossed during the Mardi Gras parade, and it made a mess. And that stuff goes into the, you know, that's microplastics. It goes into the streams and gets in the fish, and not a good idea. Ms. Lane, did you have a comment?
Are we sweeping up with the sweep, with the street sweeper, like, right after the parade? Or is it just on their normal routine?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Are we sweeping right after the parade, the street sweeper? Or is that like on their normal...
Until the next morning.
Okay.
Next day, yeah, when there's no trash.
What does it look like? Is it pick it up?
I don't know.
I guess I'll comment on that, too.
Yeah, I wanna know.
So with the help of the police chief, we pulled up some data from other municipalities that have done kind of the same thing. But yeah, our ordinance says the next day that we'll sweep up the candy and whatever after the parade. So, but a lot of this confetti is so light that it's blown away by the time we get to it. So it's already down in the streams, in the woods, wherever. It's not in the street anymore. So I fully support this. I don't know if I'd call it plastic confetti. I would just say confetti in general, period. And get rid of the paper confetti, too, because it's pretty bad.
It's gonna be the same thing.
But right now, our street sweeper's down. It's in the shop. We're having some DEF issues with it. Hopefully, we'll get it back pretty soon. But when this time, when it happens where we don't have a street sweeper and we have a parade, my weekend help has to go out there by hand and sweep it up, so...
I'll amend my motion to ban all confetti.
You didn't make a motion.
I didn't?
No.
No, I didn't. Sorry. I still have the eclipse on my brain. I make a motion that we ban all confetti in parades.
I'll second.
All right. We've got a discussion for anyone. Mr. Hurleyfield?
So the candy and all of those other things thrown out, that's okay? Does it fog up the streams and everything, too? Sorry, Simon.[1786.71]
I'll say...
It's probably easier to pick up.
You're getting your, you're getting your mile, your steps in.
I'll say, I'll say please...
So, as far as the candy goes, it doesn't...
Simon, I just wanna make one comment real quick. Like, I call it the moat in front of my house, and after every parade, it's inevitable, I see candy in the moat, I see beads, I see all kinds of stuff in the moat, I have no idea how I got there, and that's a long way down.
In the creek, yeah.
So, I, I think for the most part, I think probably candy would stay put on the streets, you know, what I've seen out there, like, the Christmas parade and stuff like that, I've, but Mr. Avanzino there, he sees otherwise, I haven't seen that, so...
That's because I pick it up.
Yeah.
Or I actually get down there and get it, so...
You're amazing. But, uh, yeah, so I, I don't know if I'd ban stuffed animals and stuff like that, candy, you know, the kids love the candy, I love the candy, I don't know if you can tell, I give a lot of candy, but, um, the confetti is definitely our biggest issue, I think. Uh, the candy's so much easier for us to clean up, because it stays solid, you know, um, the confetti's blowing around, it's getting wet, it's blowing off into the woods and stuff like that.
Nobody does that, like, that silly string or anything like that?
I've not seen silly string out there. I don't, I don't, I can't say that it hasn't happened. To be a hundred percent transparent, I haven't been to a whole lot of parades, so, you know, I'm not too sure if they're doing silly string out there or not, but I have not seen that.
Not seen any. All right, any further discussion? We got a motion and a, uh, and a second to ban all confetti. Mr. McClung?
Is this taking ordinance?
I think this is just an administrative issue.
Okay, that's great, that's perfect.
Yeah, cool. Any further discussion? On favors, infip, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. If I find we need an ordinance, I'll bring one to the table. I'll talk to the police chief to see how he wants to enforce the, the banning of confetti. We may need an ordinance, just to make it enforceable. Yeah, city attorney will check on it. All right, uh, next item is a discussion of progress to removal of used tires, and our solid waste people left this.
Oh!
So, they don't do the used tires anymore, and as of April first, that becomes a different organization, but again, need a motion to discuss.
I move to discuss.
Second.
All right, Simon, do you know, you want...
I assume you're talking about the tires that are kind of back behind Equity Bank?
Yes.
In that area, right?
Yeah.
So, um, I wish Jacob was here today, our, our building official.
He was supposed to.
He kind of headed something up with Sam to get those cleaned up off the hillside. I don't exactly know what their progress is on that yet, but I know they're working with it.
Okay. He had Carroll County Solid Waste, they found out that they have to have special containers for the tires, and they can store them at Carroll County Solid Waste until there's a place to take them, but we...
They're not gonna, that's not true right now.
We cannot pull them out of the hollow until there's an approved EPA waste container to put them in.
That's true.
And, so Carroll County Waste is looking for the containers, they think they've got some on, on the line, according to what Jacob told me.
The, uh, Madison or Benin County, I can't remember the solid waste company over there...
Cards or waste management?
Anyway, that woman has the containers. Carroll County Solid Waste will not store the tires. She will provide the containers and will put them wherever we want for the tires to be loaded into, and then she will pick them up and take care of them.
Okay.
But we need to find out where we can put the containers and how big the containers are, which I'm...
I'll, I'll help with that this week and try to get that lined out.
Okay.
But we're working on that water leak over there anyways, so I could touch base with them and see if maybe that's something we could store there.
It's something we don't have to get on right away, they've been there a long time, but I, you know, I, I fear a fire if we have dry condition.
I'm not sure how we're gonna get all the tires out, that's my concern, because we worked it out.
We had a group of volunteers.
Yeah, there's a, there's a large group, Sam Dud's kind of headed it up a lot of that, and, um, Sam Dudley, sorry.
Mr. McClung?
Who owns the property?
Probably part of the city, probably part of Equity Bank.
Yeah.
Because they go quite a ways down over the hill.
And where they stop, probably the city leatherwood picks up, I mean, Black Bass Dam.
Right there at the holler that runs into Black Bass Dam.
Because they used to roll those tires down, and every time there's a big rain, they'd keep coming down.
I mean, that was, it's, there's still a lot of oil saturation down there, I mean, it's from those service stations that were there, but, you know, there is some obligation for the property owners, not just the city, to remove that, too.
So I think this removal's gonna happen on the weekend, and I think they're doing it on their own accord.
Well, that's, I mean, that's great.
As a volunteer.
That's great. More power to them.
A lot of it ends up on the city property, unfortunately, because what's, my understanding, and we've been looking at this for a long time, five, six, seven years, is every time we get a big, heavy rain, that washes a lot of the tires down, and we keep finding more tires down by, by the lake.
And there's no way to get to them from below much, is there? Well, there is, I suppose.
You can't get them from above, so you gotta get them from below.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Winch cable or something.
So, I know Jacob's been involved with it, but...
The ball's kind of rolling a little bit, and that's why I wanted to let the public know that we're trying to keep from having a tire fire, and, and we have volunteers and businesses willing to go work with us, and...
Yeah, it's a great, um, public involvement kind of project, you know?
Yes.
So, um, with the volunteers and their help to get those tires out of that ravine, you know, that's, uh, that's huge, you know, that we have that volunteer base to kind of accomplish this project like that, so, and kudos to, um, Sam Dudley and Jacob Coburn on getting all that set up.
Indeed. Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to our next item is a resolution for a temporary entertainment district for Jeep Jam.
Motion to discuss.
Get a second?
Second.
All right, uh, this is a, uh, temporary entertainment district for the Jeep Jam, which will be up at Pine Mountain Village, uh, and similar to, I guess it'll be from September twelfth through, uh, Sunday, September the fifteenth, uh, from ten AM to eleven PM on there. Think they had one last year also. Mr. Avanzino?
Yeah, just a quick question, I know that everybody's liquor license expires June thirtieth. Are we being presumptuous in approving these, thinking that they will get their liquor license renewed?
I don't think that's any of our business, I mean, they're assuming they will have that liquor license, and with Paulies being up there, they'll be holding liquor license now.
Okay.
If they don't have a liquor license, they can't sell.
They can't open anyway.
Yeah, I know, I just didn't want, I just wanted to put that out there, so...
Even if, if they don't approve, go by state law, then we can't operate, so, yep. So, yeah, we're being presumptuous that they'll have their liquor license, I'm sure they will.
I make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
You may read for, sign a number and read for...
Yes, shall, sign the number and read it for package, not for package, but for passage.
All right.
It's a resolution, right?
Resolution.
Yes. All right, Mr. McClung made a motion, did I hear a second?
I did.
All right, uh, Mr. Meyer seconded, any further discussion? Need a vote, voice, we need a...
Got it. Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McClung?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Assigning resolution number eight, five, seven, a resolution to authorize a temporary entertainment district and establishing standards for its operation for Jeep Jam event. Whereas prior ordinances of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, allow the creation and governance of temporary entertainment districts, and whereas application has been made for a temporary entertainment district to be granted, and whereas the mayor and required department heads of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, have reviewed the application and have found it appropriate to forward for city council consideration, and whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs has made a comprehensive study of the application and its request. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, purpose and intent, the purpose of the entertainment district is to promote hospitality and tourism within the city, and to highlight restaurant nightlife entertainment and hospitality options for tourists. Section two, location, the temporary entertainment district shall be located at Pine Mountain Village, pi, five acres of paved, paved retail area. Section three, dates and times hereby permitted, Thursday, September twelfth through Sunday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, ten AM to eleven PM daily. Section four, identification of participants, those persons who wish to possess or consume from an open alcoholic beverage container within the district, or enter the district from an alcoholic beverage permitted establishment with an open container shall first obtain a wristband and beverages will be served in prepackaged cans. Section four, permitted sound, live amplified sound, including music, shall be permitted under the following restrictions. A, music can only be performed and replayed from the hours of eight AM to ten PM. B, stage or broadcast area shall not be located within the fenced area. C, sound produced shall not exceed eighty-five decibels. Section six, applicable state and local laws, all laws and ordinances not addressed herein shall remain in full force and effect. Section seven, removal of alcoholic beverage from the district by participants, it shall be unlawful for any person to remove an open alcoholic beverage container from any entertainment district. All unfinished quantities of alcoholic beverage must be properly disposed of prior to the participants leaving the temporary entertainment district. Section eight, police and fire authority, nothing in this resolution prevents the chief of the Eureka Springs Police Department or the chief of the Eureka Springs Fire Department from suspending the operation hours of any entertainment district if necessary, to comply local, state, or federal law, or fire codes, or if necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you. All right, uh, our next item is a resolution for a temporary entertainment district for bike blues and barbecue on September eighteenth through twenty-first.
Motion.
Same location.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, uh, this will be in the same location, and I meant to ask, and y'all probably looked through your application, but both the police department, public works and fire department have all approved it. So again, uh, it's, it's, uh, in Pine, Pine Mountain Village, so... Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we assign, uh, this resolution to number and read it for passage.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, Mr. McClung made the motion, Mr. Meyer seconded, uh, and we'll have a roll call.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McClung?
Yes.
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Assigning resolution number eight, five, eight, a resolution to authorize a temporary entertainment district and establishing standards for its operation for bikes, blues, and barbecue event. Whereas prior ordinances of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, allow the creation and governments, uh, governance of temporary entertainment districts, and whereas the application has been made for a temporary entertainment district to be granted, and whereas the mayor and required department heads of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, have reviewed the application and found it appropriate to forward for city council consideration, and whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs has made a comprehensive study of the application and its request, now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, purpose and intent, the purpose of the entertainment district is to promote hospitality and tourism within the city, and to highlight restaurant nightlife entertainment and hospitality options for tourists. Section two, location, the temporary entertainment district shall be located at Pine Mountain Village, five acres of paved retail area. Section three, dates and times hereby permitted, Wednesday, September eighteenth through Saturday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, ten AM to eleven PM daily. Section four, identification of participants, those persons who wish to possess or consume from an open alcoholic beverage container within the district, or enter the district from an alcoholic beverage permitted establishment with an open container shall first obtain a wristband, beverages will be served in prepackaged cans. Section four, permitted sound, live amplified sound, including music, shall be permitted under the following restrictions. Music can only be performed and replayed from the hours of eight AM to ten PM. Stage or broadcast area shall be located with the fenced-in area, sound produced shall not exceed eighty-five decibels. Section four, applicable state law, state and local laws, all laws and ordinances not addressed herein shall remain in full force and effect. Section seven, removal of alcoholic beverage from the district by participants, it shall be unlawful for any person to remove an open alcoholic beverage container from any entertainment district. All unfinished quantities of alcoholic beverage must be properly disposed of prior to the participants leaving the temporary entertainment district. Section eight, police and fire authority, nothing in this resolution prevents the chief of the Eureka Springs Police Department or the chief of the Eureka Springs Fire Department from suspending the operation hours of any entertainment district if necessary, to comply with local, state, or federal law, or fire codes, or if necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare.
All right, thank you on that one. Now, our next and final resolution is another temporary entertainment district. Again, this will be for the Ozark Rally event being held at Pine Mountain Jamboree, uh, and it's June twentieth through Sunday, June twenty-third. And again, the police and fire and, uh, public works have all rejected this.
Got a question?
Okay.
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Is this another motorcycle rally?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Give a motion, all right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, assign this, uh, uh, resolution to number and read it for passage.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. McClung made the motion, Mr. Harry Myers seconded, so, hearing none. Roll call, yeah.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Autumn Slane?
Yes.
Terry McClung?
Yes.
Assigning resolution number eight, five, nine, a resolution to authorize a temporary entertainment district and establishing standards for its operation for Ozark Rally event. Whereas prior ordinances of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, allow the creation and governance of temporary entertainment districts, and whereas the application has been made for a temporary entertainment district to be granted, and whereas the mayor and required department heads of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, have reviewed the application and found it appropriate to forward for city council consideration, and whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs has made a comprehensive study of the application and its request. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county, city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, purpose and intent, the purpose of the entertainment district is to promote hospitality and tourism within the city, and to highlight restaurant nightlife entertainment and hospitality options for tourists. Section two, location, the temporary entertainment district shall be located at Pine Mountain Village, five acres of paved retail area. Section three, dates and times hereby permitted, Thursday, June twentieth through Sunday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, ten AM to eleven PM daily. Section four, identif, identification of participants, those participant, those persons who wish to possess or consume from an open alcoholic beverage container within the district, or enter the district from an alcoholic beverage permitted establishment with an open container shall first obtain a wristband and beverages will be served in prepackaged cans. Section four, permitted sound, live amplified sound, including music, shall be permitted under the following restrictions. Music can only be performed and replayed from the hours of eight AM to ten PM. Stage or broadcast area shall be located within the fenced area, sound produced shall not exceed eighty-five decibels. Section six, applic, applicable state and local laws, all laws and ordinances not addressed herein shall remain in full force and effect. Section seven, removal of alcoholic beverage from the district by participants, it shall be unlawful for any person to remove an open alcoholic beverage from the district by participants. It shall be unlawful for any person to remove an open alcoholic beverage container from any entertainment district. All unfinished quantities of alcoholic beverage must be properly disposed of prior to the participants leaving the temporary entertainment district. Section eight, police and fire authority. Nothing in this resolution prevents the chief of the Eureka Springs Police Department or the chief of the Eureka Springs Fire Department from suspending the operation hours of any entertainment district, if necessary to comply with local, state, or federal law or fire codes, or if necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare.
All right. Thank you. And it's a business, so we have a thing on the agenda. If not, we'll go ahead and city council comments. Mr. McClung?
Well, I like the fact that we're going to have volunteers helping out the tires and the Equity Bank volunteered to provide snacks and drinks and whatever. So once we work out when that can be done, it's going to be good for our city.
Well, I appreciate everybody's conversation, as always, about the trash bags. Thank you. I was a little disappointed in the solar eclipse, but it was still interesting nonetheless. That's all.
I don't have anything.
CAPC hopefully will be voting on a new director this Wednesday at 5:00 PM, a special meeting. And I think the applicants, three or four applicants have been interviewed and then they'll bring them to the commission and we'll vote on them. Hopefully be finished all up this Wednesday.
And what time, that's not televised live?
I don't know what the special meetings are.
Are the regular meetings televised live?
No.
Not live, no. Not live. They're all recorded.
Next day usually.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. Well, I hope everybody enjoyed the, I had a lot of moves about coming in. I know that we stayed 40 or 12 back in 2015. It was interesting. So I hope you got a few, you have to stick with it. Kind of, kind of go along with the eclipse, although it's a little bit later on in a couple of weeks. We've got the 36th Annual UHA Conference. So if you missed the rapid thing, I was attending the USO Conference on April 12 through 14. It's always interesting. Just thank you all, the convention center and people. Also, a big deal, kind of exciting, and some references to the hashtag Eureka Scene, which is a video production recorded in live music video for Thursday, April 11th, this week's program, from 7:30 PM to 9:30 PM. Fossils of ancient robots from the free concert. Also, we got Drumming in the Parks coming back. It's a heartbeat in our community and everybody always enjoys that. Returns to Basin Park on Saturday, April 13th. And then we have the Spring Fleeing Bike Rally, April 17th through 41st. So take a motion to the attorney.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. See, that really wasn't the move.